First thing, Bonnie, you would go ahead and say your open meeting notice?
All right. So before we begin, we want to share that we will be recording tonight's meeting. We do plan to share this recording publicly in the event that a student, parent, staff, or community member would like to know what was discussed. If you do not wish to be recorded, please let us know at this time. Thank you.
Okay, the next thing we'll do on the agenda is we'll stand up for the President of the Nation. Our President is in two parts, United States of America and to the Republic which stands in one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, justice for all. Thank you. Next one will be... Okay, next thing to discuss is on B would be the Board Calendar. Any questions or comments?
None for me.
All right. Also, okay, that's your puppy, Carrie?
Nope, not mine. This is my puppy, Russ. He doesn't like the fact that I shut the door, so I think I'm gonna have to let him in.
Okay. The next thing is public request. Any questions, concerns? Here in then, we're gonna move right into Mary's presentation.
You guys know if I jump up, it's I'm checking on the grandkids, okay? Sorry.
Okay. Well, also mute your line if you're not, could you mute yourself if you're not speaking?
I will try.
Okay, so we'll have all that feedback. Oh, pretty puppy.
Yep, this is Russ. He is a companion to his big brother, Wilson. We are, as you already know, most of you who know me, we're big Seahawk fans, so this is our five-month-old, and he just thinks he's my office buddy, and he loves listening to people talk on Zoom and Google Meets, so he will be joining us this evening, I guess. Well, welcome, everyone, and thank you for making the time to continue the work together. And for those of you I have not met, I'm just gonna take a moment to introduce myself. I'm Mary Furtakis, and I'm a former school board director. We'll leave the door open. I'm a former school board director. I served for 22 years on the Tukwila School Board, and I'm a past president of WASDA, the State School Boarders Association, and I'm currently an elected member of the State Board of Education. So you're, I'm coming to you after two full days of state board meetings, and it's just been a delight to work with you. Part, I'm on the WASDA Leadership Development Cadre, so I do board trainings around the state here, and I also work with the National School Boards Association and do trainings nationally with board superintendents and district leadership teams. And it's, I get called in when, a lot of times when we're working on issues of equity, because Tukwila was actually, one of the years I was board president, we were named most ethnically diverse school district in the country by the New York Times, and we're an immigrant refugee resettlement area, so just about every issue that is challenging for a board we have encountered, and some things we've done well, some things we did not, but we have a lot to learn and to share and hopefully make that better for everyone else. So that's a little bit about me, and so I also, for those of you who are new, if you're gonna be attending the WASDA Annual Conference, there is an all-day new board member boot camp, and I'm going to be one of the trainers for that this year. So you'll see a familiar face in that, and I'm looking forward to doing that with all of our new people coming on board. So what I'd like to do is what we often do for, are, just for those of you who are new, when we met the first time, we did a really important check-in question, which is what do you want to accomplish on behalf of your students this year? And that gave people an opportunity to just share a little bit about their heart and their why. So we're gonna do something a little bit different this time, and I'm gonna ask you, we're all in our little rectangles, but there's a lot going on, and we bring a lot into that space. And so part of doing this work together is developing relationship and being able to see each other and to be authentic. So I want to give you an opportunity to share one word or phrase that's describing how you are showing up to your rectangle this afternoon in our time together. So I'm going, I will start, and then I'll just call on people as I see you on my screen. So my one word or phrase is grateful. I am grateful that you are a group of people that has chosen to serve your community in this way, and that you're choosing to do this kind of work to ensure that you can be the best that you can be with the types of communication you have with each other, with your internal and external stakeholders, and I'm grateful to be a part of that with you. So let's go to Melissa, followed by Stanley.
Trying to find the little mic button. Rushed but determined. It's just been crazy times at work and trying to make everything fit into a standard day that isn't standard anymore, but determined to make the most out of my time when I have something as important to do as this.
Thank you, Melissa. Stanley, followed by Carrie.
I look at eager, exciting, ready to learn. I think it's a good thing we get together as a group and learn how to communicate with each other. That's very exciting.
Carrie, followed by Edward.
Yeah, for me, it's focused. I spent the day at the Burian Farmers Market with my team in the wind and the rain today, but this work is powerful, important work, so I am focused, and I don't think there's anything really more important that we could work on than our communication together as a team, so focused.
Thank you. Edward, followed by Kathleen.
My word would be hopeful for the students and staff of the Ording School District.
Thank you. Kathleen, followed by Rick. Oh, you're on mute, Kathleen.
Multitasking, which I didn't have that ready for. So, and I'm not as in good shape of multitasking as I used to be when I was teaching, but the good thing about being grandmother role at the same moment I'm being a school board member is that it keeps me in touch with kids, all different kinds. And so if I jump up, something's going on.
Rick, followed by Bonnie. Oh, you are on mute.
Sorry, I thought it was the little one in the corner. Honored, overjoyed, and very curious.
Awesome. Bonnie, and then there's a phone number, and I got sure who that is.
So I'm encouraged, would be my word. We have a great board, we have a great leadership team, an awesome superintendent, and so I'm just looking forward to the direction of our district for our students and staff and community.
Thank you. And whoever's on the phone number ending in four-three, could you please identify yourself and share a word or phrase?
They probably just check it, just listen again.
I'm just a member of the community who is listening in on this call because I saw that it was something that was, I was able to listen to on the district website. So my understanding is that the public doesn't participate in these meetings, I was just like to listen in, so that's, that is what I'm doing, and happy to be included in that way. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, and I would just correct one thing you said, you are not just a member of the public. Our members of the public are extremely important, and we appreciate you being here. So, the, so thank you for sharing that, and that's a really helpful way, again, just to, just for starting the, part of your work together is developing relationship and knowing who each other is, and taking that moment to just slow down, recognize that we're coming in from a lot of different places. It's a, it's a great way to just recognize and see people, and it also then gives them permission to say, I'm gonna just sort of put some things aside so I can focus on our time together. So thank you for participating. So we're gonna dive in. Each of you should have the the board communication protocols that were separated out from our last time together, where we were looking at developing board operating principles, and I love the way you put it together. It looks really great, and great job for going ahead and adopting those, but the document we were originally working from had both items in the same one, and we were separating them out because they're actually different roles and responsibilities that you have. And so that was, what we worked on before was how you are conducting business with each other, and once you have sworn in any new board members, you're going to want to revisit those because your new board members need the opportunity to also know what that conversation was, to walk through it, and to know what they're agreeing to in the type of ways that you are going to be interacting with each other. So that's a, that's an incubator issue that we're gonna set aside for now, but you'll want to come back to that. So the communication work that we're doing tonight is taking the rest of that document where you had some things related to board superintendent communications, and you have, you have different types of communications. You have the way you interact with the, your board superintendent and expectations, and the way you then communicate with your internal and external stakeholders. So we're gonna walk through, I think, Bonnie, you posted both of them, right, that we had? Okay, it might be easier if we go through the one that you have already worked on that has the border around it, because it is broken out through these different categories. And what we want, wanted to walk, what I wanted to walk through with you is to see if we can flush this out a little bit more and get some more specifics in it so that it's really clear for people and that there is agreement on how this kind of communication is going to be taking place. It may not seem like it's that big a deal, but when you have lots of things going on, and as busy as people are, when we know what to expect and what your organization knows what to expect, it actually adds a lot of clarity, and it takes away some of the chaos, particularly when you find yourself in situations where you have to move quickly, which has pretty much been a definition of the last 20 months. Things have changed all the time, and so the structures that we have help facilitate us being able to manage that kind of constant change and the different kinds of dynamics that come up. One of the things that's gonna be important is the issue around asking questions and getting information. And for those of you who are new coming on, I usually tell people, give yourself 18 months. It's gonna feel like a fire hose for about that amount of time. You're coming in halfway through a budget cycle, it's already been approved, and so that can be a little frustrating because things are already in place, but it's a good opportunity to be asking a lot of questions. And there is no dumb or stupid question when we're doing this because everybody, when we came into this role, we were on a really steep learning curve. So the issue is how do, you know, what are the agreements on asking questions, getting information back? How does that work in a way that you as a board member are getting the information that you need, and your staff is not overburdened in how they're responding? And that we're giving, we're building in a structure that gives them the capacity to respond in a timely manner, but also be able to do the work that they're, they're already doing. Does that make sense? Okay, so let's start with the, you have on your very first thing that the board spokes, the board spokesman, the board president is the board spokesman or spokesperson. Is there any, do we need to, do I need to do any kind of background or explanation as to why that is the normal process for boards to have one person as a spokesperson?
I think it'd be great if you touched on it.
A little clarification, please.
Sure. So, you know, I actually probably would have written this as the board president is the spokesperson and also has the ability to delegate that, should they want to. The board chair always has the option to be communicating with the superintendent if you're in a district with a communications, a public information officer, working in tandem with them, or if an issue is something that another member of the board might be a better spokesperson for, you have that, the board chair has the ability to delegate that. But the reason you have one person speaking on behalf of the board is that you want to make sure that your information is accurate. And I will give specific, a specific example of where this can be really problematic. When you're in the middle of bargaining, you're gonna be, and you're in a community that was the size of mine. It is highly likely, if that becomes contentious, that you are going to have different people coming to different board members and asking for your opinions about things. And the whole point of that is to try and divide and conquer. I'm just gonna be very, you know, upfront about that. It is to see if the board is saying different things, and you want to have a unified message. One of the things that we did in our community also, when we, when we knew there was going to be a contentious issue out there, and we're a smaller community, highly likely to be talking to people in the grocery store or on a football field or a soccer field, we wanted to make sure we were saying the same thing. So we would actually develop our talking points and would come to agreement that these were the messaging pieces that we were gonna say, they were accurate, they were concise, and that they were easily understood.
Yeah, Mary, if I could just add, really, I actually, I think it was my first year as a board director, received an email from a person who presented themselves as a member of the community who was curious and had questions, and they were a little bit odd, so I deferred, but when we looked into who it was, they were not in our community at all. It was like basically phishing to try to get me to comment during bargaining, so just, not just at the grocery store, but also in our emails, communication and stuff, we have to be cautious.
Right. That's, thank you for sharing that, Carrie. You know, these, I can, I can talk to you about principles. You all have examples. I also do too, after 22 years, of what this looks like in practice. And one of the most important things that you need to be aware of as a governing body is that it's important for your community to have confidence that when you say something that it is, it is being authentic, it's being honest, it's being transparent, and it's speaking as one voice. Regardless of how people, we as, we as human beings, we like to know that things are predictable. In an uncertain time, it's important that we're hearing consistent messaging. And so this is one of the ways we do that, is by agreeing that this is, this is how this is going to work. And that is pretty standard operating procedure for most school boards, that the board chair is the spokesperson for the board, but they are working in very close collaboration with the superintendent. And again, if you do have a public informations officer or somebody who is tasked with communications, that that is also going on. Like I said, we went the extra step, knowing that we would be asked some things that even though our role was to say, the board chair is the spokesperson, and, you know, I'd be happy to give you their contact information, you can respond to them. We knew that sometimes that just wasn't going to work, and so that's why we had unified messaging that with three talking points that we had discussed and agreed upon. So what I'd like to know is, on your communications protocols, the way this is stated is it says board spokesperson, the board president is the board spokesperson. Is there anything that you want to?
I would like, it should be, it was good when you added that they could delegate, delegate it, because we do have a communication officer right now, especially doing, you know, I mean, in my time, you had some legal issues that need to be communicated and had to be communicated the right way because the opposite lawyer was looking at that. So I think, I think that would be a good fit, that we can delegate it to someone.
So couldn't we just add then, the board president or their designee is the board spokesperson?
Yeah, you can, you can do it that way, what I, what I was writing down here. The board president is the board spokesperson, the board president has the ability to delegate this responsibility.
Good.
All right. Okay, let's go to board superintendent. Cooperation is the way this is being framed. The board's direction to the superintendent will come by way of an approved motion of consensus and will be communicated by the board president. Board members will meet regularly with the superintendent to discuss district operations and establish meeting agenda items. So can we flush that out a little bit? Does that mean, help me understand your, your practice. By way of an approved motion, is, is that related to things that come up, for example, as part of public comment? That somebody's made a request for information, et cetera, and it's been, the superintendent is being asked to follow up? Or is this, what, what, what types of things is this covering?
So I'm just gonna jump in and say, I'm a little confused at this one, so bring on the conversation.
That's why I'm asking the question, because I was a little confused by it myself.
Honestly, I don't remember why we put that in there.
We haven't done an approved motion for consensus to be able to bring an issue forward yet. We more, in our workshop, as we discussed, we created a collaborative calendar and a timeline to bring certain updates to the board of directors, and so our established calendar has kind of been, are more formal, informally, when things bubble, I raise those through the superintendent update. So if we have questions about communication or lunches or things of that nature, I report to the public and board via a superintendent monthly report, as do we try to insert celebrations that align to our strategic work and highlight important contributions of students and staff and things of that nature, community, school district partnerships. So confused by the language, but our practice is as I've described it thus far in my tenure, I will say.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also, I'm trying to remember what the intent was behind that, and if maybe we got the wording off.
I think that, if I can remember, that was put in place for the previous superintendent. Best way before all you guys, this way, when I got on the first time, there was having a communication issue, and I think that was put in place for them.
I think this was part of the work that we did when Dr. Apostle was sitting, and we were reviewing other area local boards and kind of their practices. And so this, along with our operating principles, became that one giant document, and I, I'm pretty sure that these were items that we felt were important that we had looked at in other districts' policies that we wanted to include as our own. But how, how we function, it, it doesn't meet the words, it doesn't.
Reflect that, yeah. I think the intent was so that we didn't have, like, one board director saying, go this way, and another board director saying, go that way. It was, you know, it was agreement that we would be aligned in our direction and asks and expectations of the superintendent, but I don't know necessarily, like, we don't, we don't approve motions and.
Well, it sounds to me like it's referring to a final decision, the way it's made, but it's kind of nebulous as to what exactly it means. I mean, that's what, that's my response that I think it's about, but it's obviously not clear what it is directly alluding to.
Yeah.
You can interpret it many ways, and we wanted to clarify how we want it to work, because you can interpret it many ways.
I think for me, that, that to me would infer that any singular person doesn't have the authority of the board as an entirety to direct the work in that directed work would come by the way of a majority vote of the board.
So there, when we talk about that, there are occasionally the instances where something happens on a Tuesday, and we're all, we're having our two-on-ones and our one-on-one meetings with superintendent, and decisions are kind of made, what to add to the calendar, or what to, what to have on the board upcoming board meeting. But when there's an emergency situation, something that doesn't have time to be put on the calendar, reviewed, and say, okay, we agree with, is that kind of where this would come into play, that kind of communication?
Yeah, so yes and, and you're raising lots of examples of why you need to have some flexibility and how you're choosing to do these types of things. You, if you're gonna have an approved motion of consensus, you have to be in a publicly noticed meeting with a quorum. That is going to hamstring you for situations like you just talked about, when, when things come up, et cetera. You also, so I raised the issue of one that often happens in meetings in providing direction to the board from, to, to the superintendent from the board. Public comment, you know, somebody raises an issue. And when I was our board chair, we would listen, and then we'd turn to the superintendent, say, would you please follow up on the concern and respond, you know, do you have everything you need to be able to follow up with this person on their concern, and please report back to the board? And then, you know, in that update, which is a structure you have in place that was already mentioned, then we would get those kinds of updates, you know, this community concern that was brought forward at this meeting, you know, this is how this is being addressed, or this was the response that was given. So those you can do, because you're, you're in person, you can do it, and it's important actually to do that for people to know you are following up, and somebody is going to be following up on, on a concern. When you're in your board meeting and you've got your agenda, and your other things come up as a result of information that's been shared, that's when you would also, you know, you can look around and get consensus to say, let's take a look at our board calendar, and can we have a study session on this? On, where could, where could we fit this in? You know, there's consensus on the board that we would like to know more about X. So where can we, we fit that in? Generally, the other piece of this is, the second item is talking about agenda items. Now, every board member has the ability to ask for an agenda item to be put on the agenda, and that goes through the board chair. Because the board chair is the one who's working with, and hopefully you have a structure where both your board chair and your board's vice chair or president and vice president are meeting and collaborating with the superintendent on what your agendas are going to look like. So, you know, every board member has the ability to say, I'd like to add this, have this added to the agenda. You bring it to the board chair as your spokesperson and the person speaking on your behalf as agenda meetings are occurring, and you're figuring out, again, with that board calendar that you have, okay, this request has come from a board member, where can this be put so it can be addressed soon? So those are, those are some examples, you know, things that you can do when you're together. You can take a temperature of the room, is there consensus that we would like to have this as a board? I'm, I'm hearing as the board chair, that we'd like to have a study session, is that the board's consensus directing superintendent, can we please look at the calendar and see when we can fit this in? You know, so you can very cleanly take care of those kinds of things. You can also very cleanly take care- cleanly, um, take care of those kinds of things. You can also very cleanly take care of things like, uh, agenda items. Um, as board members know, you have the, the ability to, to ask and, uh, request for agenda items to be coming up on a, a future one. Um, there's, you know, so we can put some, if those are the kind, are the, if that's the kind of thing that would actually be reflective of your practices, you know, because you want your, your protocols to actually be reflective of your practices, um, is that the kind of thing that would work within the, the structures that you have and would make sense? And I'm asking both board members and superintendent because this is, this is also a workload issue, um, and making sure that we're, um, that something that might make sense to the board, it's always important to check in with your staff and see, okay, is that going to work? Um, or do we need to make some type of an adjustment, given our capacity?
I think for, from my perspective, the way we are working, I think, works. I just don't know how to word it in this document appropriately. But for me personally, really the only thing I want is the no surprise, um, the no surprises rule. And that doesn't just come from, um, our superintendent to us, but us with each other as well. So, um, if something's going on in, um, a meeting with, uh, Kathy and I, and we bring something up that we have a concern about with the board, we should be able to go to our, um, super, our, uh, president, our chairperson and, um, have that conversation. And I, I, I think we're all pretty open, but decisions shouldn't be made, um, autonomously, um, by just one board member in that meeting. Um, and again, giving for that there's going to be circumstance occasionally, that there's going to be an emergency item that happens in the middle of the week after, you know, one meeting with the superintendent has already occurred. But having an open communication policy whereby the chairman is notifying all the board members or having a conversation about that, that's.
Yeah, you have on your operating principles for the, how the board interacts with each other, your number two under communication is, I will not surprise the superintendent, staff and fellow board members. That is critical. And, um, it is probably worth stating again on, on this document under board superintendent cooperation, that you are, you are operating under a no surprises expectation. Because there is nothing that, um, derails, um, a team working together than this kind of gotcha. Um, it does not instill trust, um, and it serves no one, um, to be confronted with a surprise. So, um, would you like to explicitly add that in to this, that we have an expectation of no surprises in our board superintendent communications?
Nobody else has. I feel like I'm the one doing all the talking here, but I'm not sure that it's necessary to. I mean, that was one of the things when we broke this out in the first place was that that was a, an operating principle, um, idea. I, is it?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're operating, so just to be clear, your operating principles that you did before, this is, these are the agreements that the board members have in how you are working with each other. Um, and, uh, it probably should be, you know, um, to be totally explicit, that one should probably say, I will, uh, no surprises, um, to, uh, my, I, I will not surprise my fellow board members. Because that, this is specific to you all and how you interact.
I thought that was going to be on there, right?
Yeah, it's, but what you're seeing is on the, the, the operating principles is how the board interacts with each other. So they should be focused on what you do, your, your, what you do between each other and your agreements. Um, and so that, that communication principle would be, I will not surprise my fellow board members.
One of the things that we're not stating is that, uh, this is during the board meeting in particular. So it's not just in conversations with each other, because that would be an okay time to say, hey, I'm really, you know, um, but in a public board meeting, you specifically don't want to be uttering those surprises because it's not just between you two anymore. It's now the public.
Right.
So we're discussing making it, uh, more further clarity. It's just, it's too general though you're thinking.
Yeah, it's, it's not explicitly stated on your communication protocols that are, um, how the board and the superintendent communicate, how the board communicates with staff and how the board communicates with community. Um, there's three different areas here. Right now, we're talking about how the board and the superintendent, um, communicate with each other. So explicitly stating that, um, the expectation is that there are no surprises to the board or to the superintendent, um, is what you are striving for.
Cool. So can we add that?
Yeah, this is your document.
As I'm looking at this, though, I, um, it feels now, now in seeing it again, it feels silly to have a separate section for board to super, board to superintendent, board to staff, and even responding to the community. It feels kind of redundant. And we do explicitly say no surprises in the operating principles. Um, I guess it should be added to the communication protocols, but I think more importantly, or not more importantly, and more, and I think we need to strike that direction will come by way of an approved motion because that is not how we operate. Um, so I think we need to strike that out of the first bullet. And, and if we want to put a no surprises mention in there, I think that's appropriate. I would hope that that's how we would communicate with our team. And I would hope that that's how our team communicates with us. So I think that's fine to add. But I, you know, as I look at board staff communication, like, communication is encouraged and requests will be directed to the superintendent. Like, that to me is all part of that board superintendent communication protocols also, is that we will provide that information to superintendent for follow-up. Um, we will, they did an open communication with everyone, with the superintendent, with the staff and with the community. That second bullet under board staff communication to me would apply to all three. Um, so that.
Yeah, there, there's, there are some differences. Um, and this is why going through and talking through, this is how we're going to do this, is important to be having this intentional conversation. Because here's an example with board staff communication that would be different. Let's say a staff member comes to you and they have a complaint about something. There is nothing you can do about that because that's outside your realm of authority. What you can do and what is helpful for people is to direct them to follow the chain of command, um, and show, and provide them with information about who they should be contacting. For you, if it's coming to you as a board member, you need to be, um, giving that information to the superintendent for them to be doing the follow-up. So, um, that is a difference in that the board, if it's a board issue, you know, things that are coming up, you're going to your board chair, who's taking it to the superintendent. You have a staff member who's, uh, got a complaint about something, you're directing them to the superintendent. You have a parent that comes to you, they're not happy with their teacher, um, redirecting them to the chain of command. Have you spoken with the teacher? You know, if not, this is where it needs to start. And, and helping people know this is what the process is. And then also reminding them that, um, you can't be actively involved in, um, doing this because should their issue elevate to the level of the board, you are in a quasi-judicial role where you could potentially be asked, um, in an executive session to weigh in on a decision that was made. And if you've had prior conversations with the, the, um, the person involved in this, you have to recuse yourself, um, from that discussion and the vote. Otherwise, it could nullify any, um, decision that is made. And that puts the district in, uh, a legally problematic spot.
So, in general, communication protocols, as I'm sitting here looking at this, I'm now going kind of big umbrella instead of very specific. And I'm wondering if we can't, um, because I think the reason that we wanted this in the first place was to have a clear, um, process by which any communication that comes into the board is managed in this specific manner. So if all board members get an email, um, that our board chairperson is replying to that email, thanking them for their time and making sure it gets to the appropriate person, our superintendent, um, and then kind of wash, wash our hands of that for now until it perhaps may come back around again or whatever. But, um, is, am, am I, am I wrong in thinking of it in more basic terms?
No, that's, that's exactly, that you're, you're absolutely on, on track. It's, you know, having a common understanding that when this happens, this is our process that we activate. When this happens, this is what our, uh, we're in this situation, this is our process that gets activated. Um, and I, I can't remember if we had this specific conversation, um, this summer when we met, but one of the ways, uh, that boards have addressed this issue of things coming in and that sometimes some people get emails and sometimes others don't, um, is that they've established a general board email. And so any communication that comes in goes to that. We did that in our district. It said T S D board. And that way, we all saw it at the same time. So there was no extra steps for needing to communicate and ensure or have to follow up, you know, how many people got this email, you know, and, and, you know, because sometimes people are like, like what happened with Carrie, you, you were the, you were the person who got the email, not everybody, you know? Um, so you address that issue by having a general board email. And then, uh, the chair, uh, and I'm, I'm just walking through a process that a lot of boards have found to be helpful. Um, the chair or their designee, uh, responds back saying, thank you so much for contacting us. Your email is, I, I am forwarding your email to the superintendent to be able to, who will be, and someone will be contacting you to, um, discuss your concern. And the superintendent is copied on that. And then it goes to them. And then the, the closing the loop on that is the superintendent, uh, coming back to the board saying, this email that came through on the board's email, this is how, um, it was addressed.
And also that would have helped because once you, you reply all, you'll have a meeting. So that will help a lot because anytime you can send out an email and you write back and say reply all, you, you're in a meeting. You just had a meeting.
Yeah, you just, you cannot, that, that's it. That, that is like, thank you for bringing that up, Stanley. In any communications you're having with each other, you cannot do reply all. That's a meeting.
So how does, I, I guess I need to be educated here because how does it, if it's one board and we all have access to that particular email and we're all seeing that email, how does that not create a meeting if we all?
Because it, because not all of you are responding.
Okay.
Because this is going back to your board president is the board spokesperson.
Okay, thank you. I just.
They are the ones, they are the one responding, saying thank you. In large districts, they actually, um, because they can get, you know, size of your district, there's a direct correlation to the amount of mail that comes in on this. So, and larger districts, they will have an auto responder that says, you know, that has the message in there, you know, so that people are getting that back. And it's still, um, it is going to, um, the superintendent for, you know, whoever the correct person is to be, um, involved in addressing the concern.
So when the board chair responds, they respond to everyone. So everybody sees that response. So we're all.
They're, they're responding through the, that email, that, so the, the board's email, you receive all of it, but the response that if, if one person responding, it's just going back to the person who sent it.
Okay.
Because, because all five of you could respond to that person.
Yeah.
When it's the canned response or when it's the actual follow-through?
The, the follow-through has to come from the superintendent because this isn't, this is their, their job as the operations person. You are the conduit for, between a community member and a staff member to the superintendent, to who is the person who needs to be involved in how this is going to be happening. So the response back to them would be coming from the superintendent or the superintendent's designee. If it's an HR issue, it may need to come through them, you know, to get, I don't know what, whatever those internal structures are. Um, the issue for the board is, we got this, we got it to the right person in a timely manner. Our expectation is that it's going to be addressed and that we are going to be getting a response back in that monthly update or, or whatever your communication, um, vehicles are between the board and the superintendent.
I, I like it. It's efficient. If we have a concern, if we individually have a concern about it, we can bring it up to the superintendent in our, in our weekly meeting, you know, um, so I, I, I like that it's efficient and streamlined.
Yeah. And I think it would help our community because I know, you know, several times, somebody's gone to a lot of effort to email two of us at a time so that we're not having a public meeting and with the same message. So I think it would be a better service to our community to have one, one inbox for that.
Now, I, I, I do have one question about it and that is occasionally, um, any of us might get one that is, um, you know, like, uh, somebody, like a neighbor or with Carrie has been, uh, uh, families that her kids go to school with. In my case, it's been people that I've worked with. And I, I have felt the need to just respond and say, thank you for sharing this a, as a person, you know? And I don't know, is that okay? Because, you know, if it's something that tugs at you as in, as in their relationship with you, can you just thank them personally? Or is that?
Are you talking about something that would come in to you directly as, on your own email and you've forwarded on?
Um, let's see, I'm trying.
Are we talking about email? Are we talking about inter, uh, personal interaction?
Email, but it's from someone who is contacting you, um, because they have a personal relationship with you and they're letting you know something. Maybe it's something that's even pretty, um, uh, emotional for them.
Yeah. Um, I, I get that. Like, I get those and I will respond, like, I'll thank people for reaching out and, um, you know, we value the communication with the community and then, you know, forward it to Ed or to Stanley and forward it for follow-up. But I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to have a district where we didn't respond with heart to our community when they reach out to us. But I think we just have to be very careful that we're responsive, that they know we're listening, but that the details of the response will come from our one voice.
Right.
So could, could we make an agreement that we can, we could do that, but only just saying, thank you, you know, for reaching out to me. I said, thank you for sharing your feelings, you know, but, and then saying you're forwarding it.
Um, you, you want to be careful.
Yeah.
I, you know, and I, and the balance, I totally understand. Again, with our community, we wanted to be responsive too, even though we were under constraints. Um, so it was that, you know, thank you so much for reaching out or, you know, for contacting us. Um, this is what has been done with your, your, I, I, this has been forward, you know, if, if it's that type of thing, you, you don't want to, um, it's that balance, you, you don't, yeah, you, you want, you're recognizing that so that they know they've been seen, you know, that people just want to know that I took the time to write something that was important to me. I want to know it was seen. Um, the acknowledgement going back, it has been received. It's been provided to the, the person who will be, um, contacting you, um, to discuss, you know, and, and, and work on, on this. You all need to figure this out, you know, for yourself. You know, again, the first thing is no, no reply to all, no reply to all. Um, if you decide you want to set up a, um, a board email address, um, again, you know, this, with the streamlining and how, and it'll ensure that all of you are seeing everything that's coming in. Now, that's one thing that's very nice about that. And it takes the pressure off your board chair to make sure that they're communicating with. And it takes the pressure off your board chair to make sure that they're communicating with everyone and that everybody has the same information. I found that was one of the biggest, that was one of the heaviest burdens for me when I was our board chair because we had the no surprises protocol. So I spent a lot of time ensuring that everybody had the same information. And that really takes a burden off whoever is in that role, you know, when they, you've got that kind of structure. And if you were going, you know, if you have an agreement on some, you know, language that is acceptable to all of you, that, you know, this is also an opportunity to reinforce your process of thank you for reaching out. Your email has been forwarded by our board chair to the superintendent. You will be hearing from someone. And that would be echoing what the board chair has already sent out. So again, you've got a consistent message going out. And even in the situations where a district has set up that board general email, everyone still does have their own district email address because you do have to, you know, do records retention and all, all of that. It also means that anything that comes in, because it's going through a district email, that also helps you with records retention. And that is a help for your staff. Should they have public records requests?
Because you got to remember, if you use your personal phone, they can request your phone. And they request all the contact that you have talked to on your phone.
Okay, so I don't have a district phone. So you're saying I should be using a district phone. Is that what you're saying Stanley?
No.
No, no, I just said, miss.
Oh, I was just gonna say, we all use our own phones, but because we're using it for a publicly elected position and for public schools, any communication that we email out of our phone or text each other, it's all subject to the public records request.
Public records request.
Yeah. You basically, when you become elected official, hey Rick, by the way, your personal phone is a subjected to public records request, your finances have to be reported. It's pretty much.
So it'd be good for you, Rick, since you own a mortgage company, don't use the same phone.
Yeah.
Because they, you can, they can take all your mortgage, yeah. Don't use the same phone.
I use the same phone for all my stuff I do at the Haven too. It's, I've been the same phone forever. So I'm going to have to figure that out because I've had one number for a long time and I wear a lot of hats.
Right, yeah. Yep.
Oh, yeah.
It's unfortunate, it is unfortunate, but it's, it's a reality of that kind, that just comes with the role. And so we all just have to be, you become very hyper vigilant, you know, about what we're saying and doing. And this is exactly why we're having a conversation about communication protocols. Because this is one of the areas that boards have you know, had really unfortunate things happen. And a lot of it is not because it was intentional, but it ran, it crossed a line.
So if we just do email with people, I, I was told there was a Chromebook or something that would be available and I was talking with George, the previous directors of my position, he was just giving me some pointers and I said, I don't, I don't want another laptop. I've got like three. But he said, it would be a good idea to have an O S D email and just answer email on that Chromebook. So if there was a public record request, I could just say, you know, here's that. So that, that would be okay for the email part, right?
Yes.
So what you're saying about cell phones is just talking with somebody on a phone call or are you talking about emails and text? Because I'm not going to text with the public about any issues. I wouldn't do that.
Well, then that won't likely be a problem for you, but you can, should something come up, your, your phone records can be requested.
So one of the things that.
People can at least see who you're contacting with, who are in contact with.
Regularly we get text messages and emergencies from either our superintendent or Bonnie occasionally if something's happening and they need to get, give us an update really quickly, we will get that by text, via text message. Doesn't happen often, but it does happen occasionally unless you're Kathy who doesn't text, they pick up the phone and call her. But, but so those would be instances where you're then your home phone, the one that you use for everything would be subject to that request, correct?
Right. And, and this is another really important thing to know. Ed and Bonnie can send things out to all of you. You cannot do that with your board members.
Yeah, I, I found that out accidentally. I didn't understand that.
Yeah. And like I said, a lot of this is accidental. We don't know. And so this is why it's good. We're having the conversation. But it's also why if Ed sends something out to you and he's asking for a response back, you can't hit reply to all. You just reply directly to him. And then he's collecting or Bonnie's collecting the information to then be able to re-present it back out to you.
Yeah, it, we can receive, respond all, but we can't do respond all. I was really confused about that in the first month.
Yeah. And other than the situation that Melissa just described where we do, you know, we will get alerts. You know, I think what, you know, when the roof was on fire, I remember getting an alert like, hey, this is happening. This is why the parking lot's full of fire trucks, which is helpful to know. And, but I just, I'm always, anything school board related, I use my school board email. And I do use, because I don't want to be, you know, you think multiple phones is bad. I don't want to carry around multiple laptops. But I just make sure that everything I do is in board docs or in my school email and I don't. And besides, if it's in school email, if they do a public records request, it's all going through our school system. They already have everything they need. They don't need to commandeer my laptop.
Right.
Because I have, I have two laptops. I have my work laptop, which I don't, I do just work on and I have my personal one. I would do with any kind of school business because it's where I want to keep work separate from the school district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, under this, this section of the communication we're, we're looking at. We, we kind of, we're jumping around a little bit and that's fine. But for this piece of communicating with the public and staff that are, a process that I'm hearing is emerging that you're, you are interested in would be establishing a board general email. And that this would be the, the board president or their designee would respond back to the person knows it's been received and someone has seen it. The superintendent is copied on that message. So that they have received it, superintendent and their team just determine how to respond to it. And the board then receives, in closing that communication loop, the board receives in the structure you have, which I believe is, you said, a monthly report and/or you have weekly meetings with board members. How this is being addressed. So my question then to Ed, is this something that is doable for you and your staff with the capacity that you have?
Yeah, it's very similar to what we're doing anyway. Just process wise, it just creates a central email. Other than that, there's really no change to what we're doing presently.
Okay.
So I think we're good to go.
Okay. I can assure you, this is going to just make some things a lot easier for, for everybody.
It will. We've had some, some context issues of some emails filtering into spam or some of us get it, others go to spam folder and we don't know why all that's happening, but I think putting it in a central place might help us all to have the same information. We've had two or three instances where you get that, did you get that? What happened? And one of us finds out it's in spam or whoever they sent it to didn't get it and a blind copy person or a copy person did see it. So yeah, I think that'll help.
And, and if somebody, for, you know, example, if they enter one of your, of the board members email addresses incorrectly, then that's nobody's fault, but you didn't get it, you know? And so then it creates this, well, how come I didn't get it kind of thing. So.
Also, if somebody's away, it ta, it's still taken care of, you know, it doesn't leave any gaps. I like that.
Yeah. So this is then also then on your board chair, if they're not going to be available for a particular period of time, I would, I, you know, because I was traveling for work. I might not be able to respond as quickly. I would delegate that for the time period I was gone to, you know, either the vice chair or, you know, someone else who I knew because I knew people's schedules, who was going to be around and was willing to, to just, you know, and they didn't have to monitor it. It was coming to them, you know? So it wasn't something they had to check. They were just tasked with being the, the person making sure it was getting forwarded on. That's very helpful. Okay, so that, so this, this issue that we, I kind of touched on a little bit on following the chain of command. When issues come to you from community or members in particular, oftentimes, you know, we see that the most with somebody who's not happy with something related to a teacher. Is it your practice to encourage people to follow the chain of command?
Shouldn't we also have that one for staff communication?
Yes. Yes.
There are a couple of these things that I was thinking that it fit all, all of those. And then there's just a couple of things that are really specific to, you know, like community or staff, you know? But I think following the chain of command ought to be with everybody. And the same thing with the issue resolution, you know, if we're going to have a policy on issue resolution, then we should encourage everybody to follow that.
So do you think the way this is written currently under staff communications and community input, that it's clear that the process that you're, that you're using and that your, your expectation is that others will use is a following the chain of command?
Yeah, I think, I think it's clear. I just read through. I just read through them again. I agree with Kathy. I think some of them kind of applied to all the categories, which was my comment earlier about possibly combining some, but yeah, we will encourage others to follow our procedures for issue resolution. That is our procedures to follow the, refer them back to the either back to the teacher or back to the principal or, you know?
You know, I just thought of something because of what Carrie just said, you know? We can agree on these now and then when we revisit this later on, like you suggested we do when we have the, a new, you know, the board after December, that we could rearrange our things. I mean, we're making agreements now. That doesn't mean that our final draft of it is written in stone. No.
No. And in fact, these should be revisited regularly, just, you know, given the conversation we had at the beginning in trying to figure out what was the context when this was first developed. Your context has changed. And so it was causing some head scratching because it's not necessarily relevant to what you have going on. And so this is one of those things that I would be suggesting you have as part of your board calendar. That you're building in time on your board calendar to do a a yearly review of things, you know, your operating principles, anytime you have a new member on the board, they have to, you have to review them. They need the, people need to know what they're agreeing to and have an opportunity for input. And it also makes sure that it's relevant for your continuing board members too, because things change. And so that, that's just a good practice to have built in as a yearly, both communications, is this working for us? You know, anything we need to revise, same with your operating principles. It might not be, it could be a very short conversation, but you will have the confidence level that your practice and its relevance is in alignment.
I'm still here. I just wanted you all to know. I'm, I'm not on video, but I'm still here.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Thank you. I, I was just thinking, like going back to Melissa's comment about that umbrella. I feel like the email protocol is something that is just so specific for us that possibly like under board spokesman in the top category, we could add a line that, you know, just explain that, you know, the board has a general email and responses will come from either the board president or their designated spokesperson or the board president, the superintendent or their designated spokesperson. Because what the, I mean, I know this is for us, but it also helps set some expectation for the community too. And so maybe I think I was trying to look where something like that would fit and I, I think it is a very specific protocol that might be worth describing and maybe it fits under that board spokesman section.
Yep. You can do that. This is your document. You can arrange it however you want. I, I always look at these as opportunities to educate our community too. And so the more explicit you are about what the process is, then people know exactly what to expect and they know where they are in that process. What step you're on, which is why I was asking the question about, do you think this is explicit enough? And what do we mean when we say following the chain of command? Because those words are not in this document.
Yeah. Well, it does have follow our procedures for issue resolution, which that is our procedure or issue resolution is following the chain of command.
So where would someone have to go to find that?
That was what I was going to ask.
There's a pamphlet. We've, we've even got a pamphlet on this at the central office and it's communicated.
It should be on our website, shouldn't it?
So this is my, this is my point. Anything that you have in here, you need to have it easily accessible. So people, if you've got somebody who's trying to figure out how to contact you, I can assure you, it's not to tell you, you're doing a great job. You know, unfortunately, that's just the way it is, you know? And you, if they're already not happy, you do not want to make it opaque or difficult for them to do this. If you have a pamphlet that exists, then I would say, then there needs to be a link on this document.
That's what I was just going to suggest. Yes. I was just going to suggest at the end of it, you have some kind of link to that. So that, yeah, because if they're upset, they're not going to be looking through the website for where can they find this.
No, and they're going to get more irate. And then they're, then they're going to add another thing that they don't, they're not happy about that the district made it difficult for them to do things. You really, and so this is the problem we run into is, and why it's important to lay out some of these things. We get used to doing it. It's part of our culture, but your community and your staff doesn't know that. Okay. And so it's that when we were talking about biases earlier and the, the curse of knowledge bias. You know, once we know something, we just assume that that, that everyone else knows it and that this is the way it is. But that's not actually the way things work. And so while it feels like we're repeating ourselves over and over again, you actually have to. Because I can't assume that people have the same familiarity with something or even a familiarity with the website that, that we might have.
Yeah, I was looking, I was trying to find it on our website because I, I feel like we've talked about it, but I'm not finding it. So maybe it's not here anywhere.
And, and an example that I used to, when I shared with Debbie was that if you are someone who's in a situation where you're being harassed, the last thing you're going to do is remember where you put the pamphlet or where to go on the website. You need to, it, it needs to be right there for you because you're already probably on the edge. And we, we want to remember that sometimes our community members will respect us more if we make it easier rather than harder.
Yeah. I would strongly recommend, let's, I mean, let's take a look at this through those eyes, you know, are there some assumptions that are in here that would not necessarily be clear to somebody who this is their first time trying to reach out and contact you? Would they know exactly what to do, what to expect, where they are in the process?
Yeah, I was just looking at our, the contact page on our district website. Like I don't want to. I don't want to like, like we have so many issues. Here's the procedures on our contact page. Like I, I don't want to reinforce that we have so many procedures. Because Kathy's right, like you're probably already triggered. If, if you're looking for how to contact us and follow this process, you're probably already triggered. We don't want to make it more difficult. But it seems to me like on the contact us page, like having some kind of explanation, like here's how we approach issue resolution or here's the steps.
Well, also I wanted to ask Bonnie if she's still here, would, as the secretary getting, receiving things, would that make it easier for her too? Or, or Ed, and would that make that easier for you if the contact things were right there? if the contact things were right there? When people reach out to you guys?
That's a good question that I'm, I'm not sure. Mostly we know because they show up mad right here in person. So I don't know how many might be accessing via what means. And I might have to get some Bonnie and Rashad brain to see what's coming in through what forums. But generally, we would have an interest in making that accessible in a multitude of modalities. Just like our interest of how we get communication going out in multiple forums, we're trying to press that. We want to make sure we have inputs through various channels as well.
Well, so then this is a good conversation to work out some of those streamlined, some of it coming in to you guys too.
Yeah, I, we do have the student parent handbook, and I thought it would be a section in that. And I don't see it unless it's embedded in one of these other kind of chapters in the handbook. It seems like that would be a good handbook.
Be a really helpful thing, how to resolve, this is how our procedure for if you have a concern or a problem, or you want to communicate with the board, et cetera, this is how we do it. Here's the email, here's a link, here's whatever. That, that is, I will say, that is the thing that comes up when I talk, I do a lot of work with different parent groups and particularly with historically marginalized parent groups. And they've said, this is the, one of the biggest issues for them is, are these structures that seem to be impermeable? That other people need to know, seem to know how to access, but they don't know who to contact. They don't know where to start. And that in trying to look for things, it's been, it hasn't been clear, you know, who they should be getting in touch with. So when we look at this document, then I need some feedback from you. Because again, the, the part of the reason for breaking this out into sections is, yeah, you're going to have some overlap in procedures, et cetera. But I can assure you, if I'm a staff member, I'm going to look for, okay, what am I going to be, what do I need to do as a staff person? What's mine? Or if I'm a community member or a parent, oh, okay, this is what mine is. I'm going to go right to that. I'm not going to read this whole thing. And so when you're making it explicit, that's also making it easier for people. And it, it really doesn't matter if there's overlap and you're repeating some of the same things. It's also showing some consistency that this is how we address things. So I guess I need some, I know Bonnie is saying she's having some technical issues. I'm not sure if she's been able to rejoin us yet, but Ed, it would be helpful to get some input from the, the operations side of this, because this is, we're really talking about operations and how to be responding to some things. So if you have any input on, on what's in here, because it's a, it's an, it's, it's an outline, like I'm saying, I'm, what, where are the places where this should be more explicit to make it easy?
What's the, the operationalizing of the operating principles? Really the, the question, right?
Right, yeah. So we have, we have these protocols, you know, and then they have to be operationalized because that's what's falling to you for, for this, you know, the, the, we're trying to give the, the, the board needs to have some, you know, clarity also, just so that they know what their role is in this. It's so that they're fulfilling their roles and responsibilities as a part of operationalizing this. So that's, you know, really what this is trying to address. And anything the board decides to do, it has an impact on, on staff. And so that's why I always want to be doing the check in on capacity and making sure if these things we're talking about and doing is that, are these doable?
Going through both documents now, and I, I think really that there is, I don't know if it's a nudge embedded in the actual pages or if it's the nudge in how to operationalize or communicate or be transparent with those operating principles and communication protocols. Like, I feel like that the conversation is, is really shifting. How do we want to work together and interact and communicate with one another with the community? And once that gets tight, how does that become known and transparent and communicated with the constituency? So if I do have a question I want to communicate with the board, what's that process? And I believe not Dr. Apostle, but I'm sure Dr. Shepherd had some, I, I haven't remember seeing something about the flow and the process, how to resolve conflict and things like that. And I just, I agree, I don't see it on the website and I don't know where it is. Oh, I feel like that's part of our work will be that the board says, yep, this is it. Is Bonnie and my role is to help thinking, okay, where does that all need to live? So that it does become transparent and, and quite honestly, just so those protocols and communication principles live. Because if we, like to your previously, if we never talk about it, never look at it, never have a conversation, it's just a poster on the wall in the boardroom.
So that's helpful. Thank you with that, that framing. So for the board's part of this on the clarity, since we're looking at how you are going to be communicating, we have agreement that with the board spokesperson being the, the chair or your president and that that person has the ability to delegate that responsibility. We have agreed on a protocol for email communications when concerns come in on how, you know, what will happen, so that there's, there's clarity on that. That can then be operationalized at the, with Ed and his team. You have a, you have a practice of following the chain of command, asking people to do that, whether it's staff or community. And maybe what it needs to be is that, you know, it, oftentimes this is prefaced with, it is most effective to solve problems or address problems at the lowest level, you know, or at the, the most local level. That would mean if there is an issue with a teacher, you talk directly to the teacher. If resolution isn't able to be achieved there, you take it to the principal. If it can't be resolved there, then it's, goes up to, you know, you may have an intermediary thing. I mean, I, and then it goes to the superintendent and then it goes to the board. And maybe it just needs to be explicitly laid out that in, that this is what the, the chain of command is. This is the principle underlying it, that we try to resolve things at the most local level. And this is how, if it needs to go to the next less levels, these are what the successive levels are, so that people know.
Bonnie just popped in, she, what she wasn't able to say is that there is a document with regard to guidelines for resolving concerns, reference board policies, clear steps and procedures for such. It kind of says what that and articulates what those levels are. So there is something in existence. I, we were all nodding because we were all sure we saw it and heard it. Doesn't mean people won't show up in person and say, hey, I have a thing to talk about today. But we could, will marry kind of the communication, the operating principles, this. We clearly saw that that doesn't live on the website, so there's some pieces we can do to tell the story. Which isn't surprising when you have transitioned leaders, TIOs and other people over the last couple of years in a pandemic.
Right.
You know, we can clean some of that up.
Yeah.
And, and that Bonnie having to look for it and give that to you is a good example, I think, of why it ought to be a link went next to telling people to do that.
So maybe this can be, you know, basically for, for resolving issues. We have a process in place. Here is the link to that, where they can see it. And you could state that your basic principle is that we try to resolve things at the most local and lowest level. And then there are tiers as this successively goes through. Here is the link that explains how that is. So you, you know, you've given people something very basic that's saying what your process is, but here, here, go to, here's where you go for the detailed information. That would keep this pretty, you know, clean. And you can do that for both the staff communication and community input. I think this piece on board staff communications, your first item, communication between staff and the board is encouraged. I think that's important for people to know. And that, uh, and that we have a process for ensuring that this is done within people's roles and responsibilities. I'm curious about the second one. The board will promote safe candid and open communication with staff. How do you do that? Do you have a process for that?
We don't have a formal process for that. But I, but I think we have some cultural norms that provide for that. You know, that we don't attack, you know, when, when presented with information of, you know, maybe the numbers aren't where we hoped they would be, or a plan didn't go as originally planned. You know, we don't attack, we come, come from a place of inquiry. And, you know, I think that's a cultural norm for our board and why, and why we've been able to have what I feel is candid conversations with our staff, like even like the school improvement plans. We get to sit at the tables directly with our principals and assistant principals and hear what worked, what didn't, what are their next steps? You know, things that they're very proud about and things that they're working on changing. And that is, we can ask hard questions, but we don't ever, you know, shut them down or berate them or it's just.
So what I just described, can that sentence then be expanded to the board will promote safe candid and open communication with staff by? And then you can insert what these norms are, because saying it, people want to know how. You know, what, what can I expect?
So I think some of this too is very specific to some issues kind of that came up where people weren't comfortable saying anything because of fear of retaliation or what have you. So I think some of this is very specifically put in there to kind of help staff specifically feel like there is a safe place that they can go and express a situation. So again, I just think some of this is so very specific to history that doesn't necessarily exist anymore.
Except that you wanted to continue.
Correct.
Right, that's what I was going to say. It was, some of it was about establishing, you know, it's our norms, but it was also establishing a new beginning where this is the expectation for all parties involved. And that we, Kathy's exactly right away of memorializing it so that we don't go back. Like we don't go backwards to that. So.
And, and I think that's.
I have a quick question. Sorry. This is Rick Slaughter. I, I had a question. So I'm going to always have new perspectives and things because I've never been a part of this, but I have an idea about, well, what about a forum? Have you guys ever seen a forum, like anything you like, whether it's a certain golf club or a, an ATV or a car? You type in that word, space forum, you'll find a website that's a forum where they post conversations, topics, things, you know, how to's. And also conversations that they don't have to say over again. And it's, it is, for instance, I bought an FJ Cruiser, wasn't a big fan of it. I'm in love with it now, so I want to know all about what people have done to this vehicle because it's a really unique vehicle. I go to the FJ Cruiser forum and you don't have to worry about having conversations over again because once it's, it's been had in a deep discussion, they, they, it then gets filed. So when someone goes in, they type in what they're looking to talk about and boom, they'll find it. Plus other people can send them, you know, that topic and then you can go in and read all about it. I, I looked at our website as a district and it's a little, it's a little hard for some folks, I would imagine, to, to go through it. It's a little harder and deeper to get to the docs. It's not too user friendly. Compared to a forum, it, it's really not, in my opinion. But forums are something that people like because it integrates information with the social media aspect of being able to ask questions and get answers. That's just something I wanted to throw out there because I, I just haven't seen a school board forum, but I, I feel like it would serve a really good purpose to not have to repeat anything ever again.
Okay, that's, thank you for, for bringing that up. I, I, there have been some conversations about how to do this. It, it, because it's kind of like combining an FAQ in a way. You've got a repository of, of things, the topics that have been discussed. We did that quite a bit with our communications person because some things were coming up over and over again. It was something that had to go through district staff, however, so that it, because we had to be, we always have to be careful and after, we have to, we unfortunately, in the roles that we're in, we have to do that additional question of, is this a violation of Open Public Meetings Act? Or how, how can we work with that in order to do this? And so that's where I would defer to your experts on that, on how something like that might look.
Who, who would those experts be?
That's your, your internal staff. So it's your communications people, it's your superintendent, it's your legal counsel.
Okay. Well, from a historical standpoint, it would be great. So if I wanted to put a three inch lift kit on this FJ Cruiser, I could, I could just go into a one search bar in the forum, type lift kit, and every topic of conversation in alphabetical order will be in there to be found. So if, if, if I'm a board member and let's say I don't even remember if, you know, a discussion was had, it would be so easy to go in and find it if it was put in a, in a format of a forum. And there's also things called threads where conversations are, and I could see what you mean too, because if two people are on there that are board members, then that's that thing you're talking about that you can't do. But I don't know, maybe from a communication person, like that's their job, they could run the forum and then the board members could be out of it. I don't know, just an idea because it seems to be very user friendly.
Yeah, Ed, is this something that we could put as an incubator to find out? And see whether, how that might look? Like I said, I know that there are, in board docs, it's searchable so that I can find, I can go back and find anything that I needed. And Rick, just the other thing is for minutes, when, when with the Attorney General Office guidance, minutes are fairly basic. It's covering the, you know, what was discussed, actions, et cetera, but they're not going to be a long, it's not going to be a long narrative of, of things.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's just, that's, that's been the recommendation that has come down to all of us.
And I was just going to say, and Rick, you'll, you'll be taking a public meetings class on electronically, and a lot of that stuff is gone over in that class because we, we have a lot of legal obligations with the public meeting aspect of the board. That other, not everybody, now Mary, who did you say is, this applies to, I forgot. You said only certain meetings, I mean, only certain groups have to follow that.
Right, so if you're an elected official as a part of a governance body, this is, so it would be city council members have to, are subject to the same rules. Any kind of water board or, you know, fire board, school boards, anything that's a governance model where you don't, you don't have any authority to take individual action. You only have authority to take it as a group in a publicly noticed meeting with a quorum.
And your policy group, you write policies.
Yeah, right. Okay, so I'm, um, I, I'm, for me, I'm getting some clarity around this, just looking at what your, some of your already existing documents are and what some of your practices are, um, that could be put in here. The, the one that we haven't, um, really talked about is the effective board meetings, the last one. And this is, uh, just making sure that it's clear with everyone what your practices are related to when you submit questions, what, when that expectation is that you have your questions in by getting responses and making sure that everybody has the same information. Is this, is this statement that's in here, does that cover what your practice is and is it explicit enough that it's clear to everyone what this means?
Yeah, I think that's, that is how we operate. It doesn't mean you can't ask questions during the meeting.
Right.
But it means we ask them in a way that allows for staff to do their homework, like there, there is an, an expectation that people have to respond on the spot. You know, right from the cuff that we give them the grace to go find the appropriate answer for us. So yeah, it basically means do our homework prior to the meeting, come prepared, ask the questions in advance so that the responses can be gathered. But it, but like I said, it doesn't prevent us from having conversation. It just means we do it in a way that's productive.
And if during our discussion, we realize that there are further questions, well, then we realize that we can ask them, but they will not maybe be addressed right at that moment. But, um, that way we're honoring everybody's time and, and work and.
And do you have a process in place about, with the expectations about when, uh, that circle will be closed? If you've asked a question in a board meeting and getting the response or answer, um, and that being shared with everyone?
Oh.
But usually the staff, if the staff has to go back and research it, you gotta bring it up at the next meeting because that, the, the, the whole, a whole thing of it is get the questions to the staff so they can bring the research to you and what you're asking for. And at that meeting, if you want more numbers, more things, then you're going to have to wait. You cannot put them on the spot. They cannot, okay, let's recess, recess the meeting while you go find that, that, that's unacceptable.
So is the expectation then, if, uh, in a situation like that, that, uh, the, that will be presented to the board at the next meeting unless otherwise, um, agreed upon, because it may take longer to do that. Cause the, and the reason I'm asking that is if the questions are asked in a public setting, then that means, you know, this is out here in public. And if you have the questions, probably members of your public have the same question. So how are you ensuring that when you're getting the response, if this was asked in a public meeting, that, um, that is also the, the answer that you get as a follow-up, that that's also public?
I hadn't thought about that part.
So what I hear you saying is, is that we would need to kind of further clarify that with that additional questions arise during a meeting, that those would be addressed at the very next public board meeting?
Or I, or again, I don't know, some, or within whatever your existing structures are, if the superintendent is giving a report, would that be part of their report during your meeting? Any report that the superintendent is giving you is a public document, but it's going back to that, are we making it easy for people, you know, to know? And if you're doing it, if you're asking something in a public meeting, it's a reasonable expectation that the response would be coming back in a public meeting setting.
I hadn't thought about that.
So this is why I need to, you know, this way, you know, trying to think through, you know, this whole thing and how, how things are done so that we are being responsive, you're getting the information that you need, but I, you know, I need to also now turn to Ed and say, is that the kind of, is that, is there a structure in place that would allow that kind of loop closing to happen? Or does something need to be created and what might that look like? And what does this mean capacity wise?
Generally, the reason we put things out, uh, five, six days ahead of time is so board has a chance to preview, ask any questions and so we can clarify prior to, uh, which we would, uh, set whoever is presenting said report up for success and make sure they know that question. So that's my role and Bonnie's role. Yeah. And if something were to come up at said meeting that we haven't pre tuned, our practice is to bring that forward to the next meeting. Either in the form of labeling or naming it in a superintendent report, or if it's something the board has said, let's lift this into a broader, deeper report, then we would tackle it that way as well. So that's really been our practice. There'd be very few issues that would, that would compel us to wait longer than 30 days to respond to. That would really be a case, we just don't have that information at that point in time. But that's been our practice and, uh, would continue to remain our practice. We want to respond timely and proactively to concerns as well as questions raised. So, uh, I know the board's interest is, uh, how, how soon can we? And so as soon as we can do that without surprising and set people up for success in their research and response would be our MO, I believe.
Okay.
And you know, sometimes Bonnie helps us with that. I mean, I remember, um, I, I was asking, I think it was about lap or something, and then she might remind us that, well, we'll be hearing that in our report. You know, and she, she's got the calendar right there and, and tell us that. So I, but it's good that we're having the conversation to make sure that we do close the loop. So I, I, we are, but we hadn't labeled it as closing the loop.
Yeah.
I think that's why you heard silences because, well, we've been doing that, but we didn't write it down.
Right. See, and that's, that's, again, that's where it's difficult. This is why, you know, parents say, you know, there's so many unwritten things. And there's just cultural norms that happen that people aren't privy to and human nature is if you don't see something or if there's a vacuum of anything, we fill it with negative. That's just what we do. We don't, we don't fill it with positive or positive intent. It's, oh, they're trying to hide something or they didn't respond or I didn't, you know, whatever. So this is why I'm raising and asking some of these questions, just to help us think through, are we doing this? And can we point to it saying we do have, um, this in place and we are being transparent? Okay, so are
Oh, can we just add a sentence to that saying if questions arise during the meeting, they will be addressed?
In a timely manner?
In a timely manner or we will schedule a time?
If, if questions are raised during a meeting that cannot be addressed at that time, responses will be provided at the next meeting unless otherwise agreed to?
Yeah, yeah.
Ed, does that work?
That works for, for myself, yep. And Bonnie says it works for her too.
Okay. Thank you. Cause I can't see Bonnie and she's critical for this process too.
You can see a hand right now. Yeah.
Two, okay. During, I'm just taking my notes here. They will be.
Bonnie, you need to move in the camera view.
She said, go ahead and turn it back to your face and keep mine off a string.
Unless otherwise agreed to. All right. Okay. So going back up to the, um, board superintendent cooperation, um, that first line item, there was, we, we discussed the fact that you don't do approved motions um, and to strike that, but I wanted to just make sure we've got a sentence here that is, um, accurate. Board direction to the superintendent will be communicated by the board president?
Yeah. I, I was thinking about that one too. I think that would make, that would be the simplest.
It gives you a lot of leeway.
Yeah.
You need to be able to be responsive.
I debated to leaving in, you know, direction to the superintendent will come by way of consensus and communicated to the board, but we may not always have consensus. You know, so I think just will be communicated by the board president and then that's president's responsibility to ensure that we have, you know, alignment or majority consensus.
Right. Yeah. Um, and then it sounds like you already have, um, meeting, regular meetings set up to discuss district operations and establish meeting agenda items. That's already, that's there, you're good. Okay. Under the board staff communication, I'm just going through here with notes that I've been taking. I want to make sure that I'm, uh, hearing you well. Under board staff communication, uh, communication between staff and the board is encouraged. That next one I was wondering, because it's not just requests that might be coming to you, but concerns, input and suggestions will be referred to the superintendent?
I don't like adding words. I like simplicity.
So does requests cover all the things that comes in? That's why I'm just saying, I, I, there, there's
To me it does. You know, a concern is really a request. You know, somebody's asking for something to be addressed. To me, but that's just me.
I think you could probably do the requests and or concerns there because I think some people just need to get something off their chest maybe and don't, aren't really requesting any kind of action to be taking, but just want their concern heard. That's just me. I would probably be one of those people because I wouldn't be brave enough to ask for a request of any kind, but hey, I have this issue that I have this concern, I don't know why, but it bugs me and so here it is, kind of thing.
The other thing too is, um, you know, even though we know most of the time, things that come in are on the negative side or coming from a deficit thing, um, concerns is assuming that. Um, and I'm wondering if the word like input.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's better.
Requests and or input? Or input just as general, as a general word?
Because what was the email, Melissa, that you realized that Ed hadn't gotten that was a positive one?
Following up on the, um, the lunch issue.
Yes.
She was very happy with the results. And really complimented, uh, the principal over there and, um, Ed didn't get to see that. And, um, so yeah, I wanted to make sure he saw that.
What about follow-up? Follow-up will be directed to the superintendent?
Yeah, let's see. Um, I was looking at communication between staff and board and the board is encouraged. Input received will be referred to the superintendent for follow-up?
No, I don't want to put the superintendent in a position to always follow up, like, like that to me implies that with every comment that we have to provide a response and I don't know that that's necessarily the case.
Since this actually starts with communication between staff and the board is encouraged, couldn't we just put communications will be directed to the superintendent?
That's what I was wondering.
Or Communication, so board, this is, you're right, this is the board staff communicating. So communication between staff and the board is encouraged. Any follow-up will be directed to the superintendent?
Any follow-up required would be directed or?
Yeah. Yeah. Required. Cause this would be something like between, like if we wanted something from a staff member, it would need to go through Ed. Or if a staff member had feedback for us or wanted us to address something, that would still have to go back through Ed. So.
Because we're here to listen to,
Yes.
A comment, good or bad, and, but we're not going to get involved in the operations of whatever is going on. So we can listen and we can say, hey, you know, our superintendent is who you need to talk to, to facilitate any changes if it need be or whatever. Same with the good, with the good comments, but yeah, we're not getting involved in the operations, but we are.
Right.
That.
So how about, uh, go ahead, Stanley.
That'll help because remember, only employee you have is it.
Right, right. Yep.
Yeah. So how does this sound? Communication between staff and the board is encouraged, any follow-up required will be referred to the superintendent or, uh, yeah. Will be referred to the superintendent.
I like that.
That's good.
Okay. The next part on this, uh, the board will promote safe candidate and open communication with staff by some of the conversation I was hearing was that this was in response to some other things that were happening culture wise that, not sure, do you, uh, is this something that you want explicit, continue being explicitly stated?
Yes, I think Kathy brought up a great point and, and Carrie concurred, and, and so do I actually, that we want to make sure that well, anybody in our community, whether it's the staff or students, whatever, knows that they have a caring board that is, um, going to provide a safe place for them to, um, make any, a comment. So
Yep.
Yeah, I think we need to keep it there. But the how, how we make that happen as well.
Okay. And so that's the part that you haven't necessarily nailed down is your how. You do have a procedure for following the chain of command and, um, what that process is. I'm not sure if that's actually getting to what you're looking at for this particular bullet point.
I think that's something separate. Uh, that to, to me, it's that, um, we will promote open communication and like, I keep thinking like approach, you know, approach concerns from a place of inquiry, like that to me is we should be asking questions and we should be hoping to learn more about their perspective and any challenges they might have. Like, I don't know how had the how we do that would be accomplished in so many different ways. It's like not wrinkling up my face when they tell me the numbers are bad. Like, like, you know, like I, it, the how comes in just many different forms. So I don't know if I want to list them all.
So to, to, to do that generally, like what you just said, you could say the board will promote safe candidate and open communication with staff by approaching situations from a place of inquiry.
That could work. Yeah. Like I'm not going to roll my eyes like, like there's, but I mean, but that's a real thing that happened in the past. But I don't want to, want to be in that place. So, um,
Yeah.
And so one of the things that Mary is, it's a small school district like you had in Taquilla. And so, um, you know, if I see, if I see Chris on the street and I say to him, hey, I, I'm really, uh, proud of the way the bus drivers are helping each other when, uh, somebody's sick with COVID, you know? In the past, that wouldn't have been a good thing for me to do. And I think that we should be able to also capitalize on the fact that we are a small school district and honor the fact that lots of us have relationships with, with people.
Not, noticing the work that people are doing is, and commenting on that in a positive way is always appropriate. And with everything I'm hearing right now from people, the way they were, the way it's being described is June tired in October, November. So, um, I think that's, those are some of those intangible and lovely things that you can do very easily as board members, just to let people know that they're seen and that you appreciate what they're doing. The, uh, one we haven't talked about at all on this section was board members will notify the superintendent and building administrators prior to visiting school sites for board purposes. That is very important. I hope that is your practice.
Yep.
Okay. All right. That should stay in there. Okay.
Can I ask a, ask a quick question?
Sure.
Kind of in regards to that. So, um, because I'm very confused as, at some of the things as to when I'm a board member and when I'm not. So, so if I go to, um, a volleyball game, um, and I'm sitting in the gym, um, and I just go by myself, not with a fellow board member. Should I be identifying myself as a board member by wearing my board member identifying little name plate or can I just go as a community member supporting my?
You're, unless you are there as You're, unless you are there as an official representative of the district or the board, you are there as a community member. And you will always be seen as a board member. Regardless of whether you have something identifying you as such. And that's one of the tough things about being in this role. I would just want to go to my kid's wrestling match, but I'm always a board member.
And I understand that. I'm just trying to make sure that I'm following rules of engagement, so to speak. So, you know, that I'm, so that if I'm at a-
If you, unless you have an official role, you know, at that event, you know, you're there as a community member. So like, you know, graduation, you're there as an, that's an official, you know, thing that, that we're, we're doing. But other than that, no.
Okay. Yeah. Cause I, I wouldn't want to have to call Ed every morning and say, Ed, I'm dropping Nora off at BTR again.
Yeah. No, that's, no. And I'm, I'm feeling, and then Bonnie, how are you, just checking in with you. I'm feeling pretty comfortable with the conversation we've had around responding to community input on this with being able to submit some notes. This is, you know, pretty much it's gonna, there's going to be parallels overlap. We've got the, the piece about following the chain of command that we'll have a link. We've got the pamphlet. You've got your procedures. You know, encourage others to follow our procedures for issues resolution. Here's the, the link for that. And I'm wondering about this last one on here. When we hear concerns, we will suspend final judgment, recognizing we may not have a complete picture.
Yeah. To me, that's an important one that we keep because sometimes, sometimes you hear a story and it's a shocking story. And then you go back and you know, you learn more information from a different perspective. Maybe it's a teacher, maybe it's a principal, maybe it's another student's perspective. And it completely changes your view on the situation. And so I think that's just an important reminder to keep in here for all of us.
I would- I would suggest you take the word final out.
Oh yeah, that's a good call. Yeah.
This, in this here, cause you may be in a position at some point to be making some kind of final judgment. Now you've put yourself in a spot where you might not be able to do that. Plus you're-
So often it's not our role to pass judgment. That's not, that's not-
What I was going to ask is, as I was looking at this later, it feels like this is kind of operational. And so.
But if we just said, when we hear concerns, recognize we may not have the complete picture.
That's better.
That I agree with Melissa, we shouldn't-
And listen, because the thing is it went, I learned this the hard way. It only happened once, but somebody said something to me and I was so surprised at it. And I said something that was, that kind of like just cut it off. And it was like, oh, I, I just stopped the conversation there and I, you know, it had, it had to do with my own opinion. And it didn't have anything to do with it and to stop the conversation. And you don't want to stop the conversation. And when you make the judgment, it stops the conversation.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. You've done it. We've made it through this. We'll come back to you with the revisions for you to look at again and see what you think. And again, these are your documents. So you can, they're intended to be living. They're intended to be relevant. They're intended to be responsive to the environment that you're working in. So just to have it on your calendar that you're going to be doing at least an annual review of both of these. And there, we, we were hoping we might be able to, you know, given what, wanted to see how this conversation would go. Cause this was really important. But you did also have posted that there's a couple of new policies that are out from WASDA. And I would encourage you to, you know, anything we talk about here, it's not like this is a first reading. But it's good to know that these are here and that they're going to be coming up for you to discuss. And the fact that you've done this foundational work on your board principles and your communication protocols is really going to, I think, make this conversation on ethical conduct for school directors and addressing school director violations. It's going to be very helpful because this lays out for you on the violations piece. It's a very specific process that the board would need to follow with your colleagues. Should a situation like this arise? And you have actually talked about several of the items under ethical conduct that you have under your own board operating principles, such as avoiding the appearance of conflict of interest, which is a big one. So these would be supportive of, of it, you know, just bringing them to your attention. I know they're going to be coming up for review, but I think your conversation around this should be pretty straightforward. Given the conversations that you've already had about this.
I, given that we've just, we hammered out in quite a bit of detail, our operating and our communication principles, those are our commitments to each other and to Ed and the operational aspect. And so those commitments, if they're not followed, then now, then there's a document as to what happens then, because we've already made the commitments. I mean, we are making-
These, these are commitments, you know, because these are documents you're, you're doing with each other. The policy is different because any of your policies, that's your legal framework.
Right.
You're working under. So that, those will be the things that will have the weight behind them.
Yes.
These others are what you are, you, what you are doing as a board that is really powerful and important for ensuring that you're going to be one of those highly effective, highly functioning boards that we love to talk about.
But because we made the commitments, if we follow our commitments, we will be-
Yes, you're going to be right on track. Yes. Yeah. So you've got, I would call this your belt and suspenders. You've got them both. Okay. So we're closing in on our, ending our time together. I believe that you're also interested in doing your board standards, doing that review at some point and goal setting, but I need to confirm that with Ed as to what you might want to do as next steps. And so that will, we'll just wait to hear from you about that. You will be receiving our link on the evaluation that we ask anyone we do a workshop with to fill out, to give us feedback so that we can continue to improve how we serve you. So that'll be sent to each of you. It'll, it'll be sent out to Ed for distribution to you. And we just appreciate your feedback on that. Should take you less than five minutes. And then I'd love to close this out by just having each of you share a word or phrase to describe how you're leaving our time together. So let's start with Stanley and followed by Melissa.
Well, Mary, I wanted to just say it was exciting. I want to thank you for the time. And we, we'll be working with you again.
Awesome. Love it. Melissa, then Carrie.
I'm starting, I'm ending the same way I started. I'm determined and probably more than ever, this was very helpful to me to kind of put those very general ideas into something that meant more and something that can be shared and devoured by people who want to know. And I'm tired.
Yes, that's legit. Carrie, then Kathleen.
For me, productive, you know, we all looked at this before and like, yeah, this makes great sense. This is what we wanted, want to commit to. And I just am very appreciative of your inquiry and kind of poking us, what does this mean? And what's your real intent behind it? So I felt that the time was very productive and I appreciated you helping us hone this even further.
Kathleen, then Richard.
Um, I, I feel calm because everybody was patient at the beginning with me and my multitask and my special needs grandson. And I feel calm because we have gone through so much and worked out so many, so much in the way of understanding with each other. And I, I, that I find so valuable that we are understanding each other and committing to that understanding. So.
Rick, followed by Ed.
I'm feeling encouraged and relieved. It seems like you guys are more than willing to help me and answer questions. And Mary, you articulate all these things very well. So I'm, I'm very encouraged.
Awesome. Ed, then Bonnie.
Bonnie's excited to share. Very happy that I get to go first. I am going with the word hopeful still. And I just think that our collaborative work will absolutely have impact for students, staff and our broader community as we bring them into the fold of leadership.
Hi, and I guess my word would be productive. This was a great session and thank you, Mary, very much for leading it.
Welcome. And I'll end with the same word I started with grateful. It's really honoring. I'm really honored to work with you and I just wish every board was making the time to do what you're doing. It really does make a difference. And I'll look forward to seeing those of you who'll be attending the annual conference. All right. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Bye everyone.
The next one is board comments. Any board comments?
I have a quick one and it's preceded with an apology. Because there was the legislative position rankings that we're supposed to be voting on as a district. A bunch of my stuff goes into spam and I don't see it. Not to mention life just gets in my way and I think all this stuff is just advertising, but it wasn't. So as the legislative rep that I said I was going to, when it was first coming, I said, I was going to jump in both feet and just really wade into it. I didn't really know what that meant. I'm learning more. But obviously I think I just failed on this one. But the votes are due on Monday. And we have, oh gosh, I think there's over a hundred options and 15 votes that we have as to what is important to our district for the legislative session to be focusing on in this next round. What I would like to do is to send a document to your emails that actually has all of those things. I highlighted the bottom of the pages that have the items listed and they have some categories. I found it kind of confusing to look at at first, but the vote, I think it only comes from one person. I'm pretty sure I'm the only one that got it as the legislative representative and I don't want to speak for everybody. So if you get a chance to take a look at what I send you and give me your thoughts as to what are your 15 most prioritized topics? Then I can submit that to the legislative team at WASDA and ordering can be participating. And again, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah.
It's all right.
What we can do is our best. So it's all good.
Any other comments for the board? Nothing? Here and then we're going to join the meeting at six oh five. You guys have a good night. We'll see you on the 10th.
Okay.
Have a good night. Thanks guys.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Bye.